Okay, would y'all join us in a moment of silence? Okay, thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda.
So moved, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young, have a second.
Aye.
And Mr. Hodge, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda.
Move approved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jordan, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Young, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Okay. No community use tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, C, transportation.
All right, we went over this on our work session. If you want me to go back over and read those out, I can. But if not, I'll just do the motion. Motion to approve the voluntary termination of the bus contracts for Teresa Graham, Bus 261, Sandra Davis, Bus 171, Ron Campbell, Bus 108, and James Mitchell, Bus 118, as presented.
Any questions?
Are these just bus drivers, they're just leaving, and this is something that we do every year?
Or is there a bus man?
This is Mr. Everett.
Yes, I can go through each one of the four if you'd like. We have two, their buses at the term for the length of service, and they're older, didn't want to get into another 15, 18 years, so they're turning their contracts in. And then we have another person that is going to drive professionally back over the road as well.
Okay, but we do-
This is a normal thing, at the end of each year.
Okay, so are we flush with drivers, even with them leaving?
Yes, we are prepared to add them to the list to award in July.
And a motion.
Move to approve.
We are approved of consent agenda. We voted on that, that's consent agenda, sorry. Okay. All right, no visitors, right? Introductions, we did that.
Tonight.
Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, number eight.
All right, number eight was the job descriptions for information only. These are what we added into our budget, and we went over those on our work session.
Okay. Number nine, special education contracts.
What I'll do is, we went through these other night, just through our special ed department. There's a variety of different vendors here. We'll take these Murfreesboro City Schools, Bedford County Board of Ed, Kenny County Board of Ed, all using our buses with a fee of being charged to transport a Tennessee school for the blind. Motion to approve agreement with Murfreesboro City Schools, Bedford County Board of Education, Kenny County Board of Education for providing transportation for students assigned to the Tennessee School for the Blind on a space available basis. Rutherford County will be reimbursed at $49.35 per day per student for this service.
Any questions?
Move approved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, second.
Second.
Ms. Johnson? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number two there.
All right, continuation and collaboration agreement with Mid Cumberland Head Start. This is a collaboration that we've had in the past. We'd like to continue with the collaboration through the 2019-20 school year unless terminated by either of the participating in writing. Motion to approve the collaboration agreement with Mid Cumberland Head Start.
Questions? Have a motion to approve?
Go move.
Mr. Hodge, second.
Second.
Mr. Young, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number three.
All right, number three is a motion to approve the lease rental agreement of the house located at 1607 Elrod Street from August 1st, 2019 through July 31st, 2020 at $1,350 per month. This rental, which includes the use of the Wesley Foundation, will provide continued location at MTSU for the community-based Transition Academy for 18 to 22-year-olds with cognitive and developmental disabilities. The total cost, not to exceed $16,200 for a 12-month period, will be paid from IDEA Part B Special Education Funds.
Okay, any questions?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number four.
Our number four is a contractual agreement with Sherri Bryant for language training and support. Motion to approve the contractual agreement with Sherri Bryant not to exceed $10,000 during the 2019-20 school year, and it will be paid with our general purpose Special Education Funds.
Any questions on that? Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number five.
Our number five is contractual agreement with Special Kids Incorporated. Motion to approve a contractual agreement with Special Kids, Inc., not to exceed $25,000 during the 2019-20 school year, and will be paid from the GP Special Education Funds.
Any questions? Motion?
Go move.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number six.
Our number six is a contractual agreement with NAC Rehabilitation, and it's broken down about how it's being paid and what the cost is. Motion to approve contractual agreement with the NAC Rehabilitation, not to exceed $250,000 during the 2019 school year, and will be paid from the IDEA Part B Special Education Funds.
Questions? Have a motion?
Go move.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, second. Mr. Young, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number seven.
All right, number seven is a contractual agreement with Phelps Therapy Services LLC. Motion to approve a contractual agreement with Phelps Therapy Services LLC not to exceed $75,000 during the 2019-20 school year, and will be paid with the IDEA Part B Special Education Funds.
Any questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, ma'am. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number eight.
Our number eight, contractual agreement with Genesis Learning, also known as Rutherford Academy. Recommend motion to approve a contractual agreement with Genesis Learning Day Treatment Services not to exceed $1,700,000 during the 2019-20 school year, and to be paid by GP Special Education Funds.
Any questions? Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Hodge? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number nine.
Our number nine is contractual agreement with Sellers Behavioral Consulting LLC. Motion to approve the contractual agreement with Sellers Behavioral Consulting LLC at a rate of $125 per hour. This contract will be effective for the 2019-20 school year, and will be paid from the IDEA Part B Special Education Funds.
Questions?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, second.
Second.
Ms. Johnson? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Number ten.
There are no one is requesting an improvement for exemption facility fees.
Thank you. Number eleven.
Our number eleven, we're going to start with financial matters here, and I'm going to go through these, each one, we went over these. But if you have any questions, we'll entertain any questions you may have. This is Fund 141, General Purpose School Fund for the 2018-19 Budget Amendment, Career and Technical Education, to amend the net total of $63,000 in already budgeted CTE Career Technical Education Funds between the two functions, which are 71, 300, and 72, 230, as presented. You want to go ahead and go all the way through these, or you want to vote them in at one at a time?
One at a time, because they're all over the board. Okay, let's go through all of them.
Go through all of them?
Yes.
Number two, liability and property insurance. This amendment real allocates a total of $127,240 in already budgeted liability and property insurance premiums to ensure the line items where they needed. Motion to amend the total of $127,240 in already budgeted liability and property insurance premiums to the insurance line items as presented. Technology. Motion to amend a total of $842,000 in already budgeted classroom technology expenditures, and to true up other expenditures in the technology function as presented. Number four, revenue committed, fund balance, and related expenditures. Motion to amend $330,270 in revenues related to specific expenditures and committed fund balance to address the replacement costs for the Blackman Wrestling Building additional E-rate and voluntary pre-K class state revenue realization, additional state revenue and offsetting expenses for the SPED individual education accounts, and transfer of funds to Fund 177 for future elementary land purchases. Five, committed fund balance for new schools. Motion to decrease the committed fund balance by $5 million to utilize set aside funds for startup operating costs at the New Rockville High and Rocky Fork Elementary Schools. Six, to amend a net additional 2018-19 revenue by $8,494,755, and to increase the net expenditures by $524,497, as presented. Seven, substitute teachers. To approve the increase of the budgeted substitute teacher contractor expenditures between functions for $61,500, as presented. Eight, transfer within major functions for non-labor line items. Motion to approve the transfer of the budgeted funds within major functions to more accurately report the actual non-labor expenditures. Nine, career and technical education textbooks. Motion to approve the transfer of budgeted funds for textbooks from 71, 100 regular instruction major function to 71, 300 CTE function to cover the additional textbook costs for this program. Those are all from the-
Fund 141. Okay, any questions? Need a motion?
Go move.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, need a second?
Second.
Young, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Okay, Fund 143.
Fund 143, Centralized Cafeteria, 2018-19 Budget Amendments. Motion to amend the 2018-19 centralized cafeteria fund budget by increasing both revenues by $910,000 and net expenditures by $185,000, as presented.
Questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Young, thank you, second?
Second.
Mr. Hodge, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Fund 189.
All right, Fund 189, Building Program, 2018-19 Budget Amendment, E-rate Revenue. The amendment takes the $78,768 budgeted in general purpose school transfer expenditure, and adds these funds to the building program budget for elementary school land purchases. This part of the 2018-19 E-rate revenue is related to the building program expenditures. Motion to amend the building program budget, Fund 189, by adding $78,768 in transferred E-rate revenue to increase the budget for elementary land purchases by the same amount.
Any questions? Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, second? Thank you, Mr. Hodge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number four.
All right, number four was a stipend for the attendance training that will be taking place with our new system that will be student management system. Motion to approve paying a stipend of $200 per day for seven carefully selected attendance specialists from across the district to serve as our district trainers for a three-day training session both in June and July for a total of $8,400 plus employer benefits.
Any questions? Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Number five.
All right, number five, and we'll read through this over again. Bid for Oakland High School Artificial Turf, Warner's Construction has been recommended for the best and lowest bidder for the project to install turf at Oakland High School football field. The bid is $577,722, and the alternate for the Legion NXT for an additional $29,500 is also being recommended for a grand total of $607,222. The contract shall not be executed or the project begun until Mr. Marshall has provided documentation to the Director of Schools or Finance Director that the performance bond is in place and financing and loan package for this project has been completed. Motion to award the bid for the Oakland High School football field turf to Warner's Construction with the Legion NXT alternate for the total of $600,222 at no cost to the board.
Any questions? Have a motion?
Go move.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge, second?
Second.
Mr. Young? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. All right, facilities.
All right, facilities is from Thurman Francis, a request of the purchase of Wooden Storage Building. Motion to approve the Thurman Francis request to purchase a 10 by 12 storage building as presented.
Questions on that?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp, second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Rockville High School.
Rockville High School, I'll read this also. Barton Malo has submitted approval change order number two for $300,000. This change order is for revision for the approved Highway 99 drawings by T-Doc for $150,000, and increase in Batumus Index for asphalt of $150,000. Engineering Construction agrees with this request. The new contract amount will be $63,884,500. Motion to approve the change order number two for $300,000 for Rockville High School as presented.
Questions? Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. All right. Ms. Evans, are you ready?
First part of this is, Ms. Page will swear in the honor of the President.
On speaking today, testifying before the board, if you would raise your right hand. Does the testimony you give, for the testimony you give today, if you swear, it will tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, under penalty of perjury?
Okay, so, just like we had last week, but there are fewer of them, of course. Tonight, we have a few zone exemption appeals to go through with the board. Just, again, I want to reiterate that this is not something that we enjoy doing, of course, zone exemptions, they're hard decisions to make, and we know that families are advocating for their children, so we respect that. But we are also trying to hold the zoning lines as the board has them, and look at those cases that are hardships. Purposely tonight, I am trying to avoid, on purpose, not mentioning specific student names, because we are in a public meeting, and this is televised, so, just to be aware. So, tonight, the first appeal, and this is old business from last week, it's Ms. Hornsby who is requesting for her child to remain at Oakland High School instead of Riverdale High School. Ms. Hornsby, feel free to come up if you'd like. At last week's meeting, the board had asked that Ms. Hornsby get some sort of medical documentation to talk about whatever she could find out that we could look at as far as how often does her medical issues require that her child stay with another family that's in the Oakland zone? And I gave you all a copy of the note that we received from Ms. Hornsby today, and now we just need an action from the board, unless you have questions for Ms. Hornsby.
This note doesn't tell us a whole lot.
I found this to be much harder than what I expected.
Anybody have any questions? Well, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to uphold the decision of the appeal denial, or the zoning request denial.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Mr. Young? Okay, Ms. Michael, would you call Row?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, our second appeal is also an old business item from last week. Ms. Swope is requesting for her child to remain at Blackman High School instead of being rezoned to Rockville High School. The board had asked me to find out some information about, to clarify with the principals what their recommendations were. I have spoken to Dr. Justice and Mr. Lueker. They both affirmed that their decision was to recommend against the zone exemption. I'd also been asked to look into the pathway topics that were talked about. The student has not taken the entry level course, the freshman course, which is agri-science, according to Ms. Pilgrim. And then, with regards to the BCA, Dr. Justice says that all eighth graders have an opportunity to apply for the BCA during their spring semester. It does not matter which middle school they went to, as long as they are zoned for Blackman High School at the time. So it's up to the parents to pursue that during that spring semester if they're interested. If not, they're allowed to apply during their freshman year for entry as a sophomore, again, if they are zoned for Blackman High School.
Anybody have any questions? We have a motion?
And again, Ms. Swope is here, if you all have questions, of course.
Yes, with her going to Rock Springs Middle, we didn't get any information about the BCA until we went to that freshman orientation, and that's when they told us that they needed a semester's worth of her grades. So that's why we applied when we did, is because that's just what I was told. And she, as you guys saw last week, she meets those qualifications.
Anyone? Entertain a motion?
I recommend that we against the zone exemption. Recommend against the zone exemption.
Uphold recommendation to uphold the county's denial, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, have a second?
One second.
Okay. Have a second? Ms. Johnson? Okay, call Row, Ms. Michael?
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so tonight, we have our three appeals that you've not heard before. Our first is the Welsh family, if they would like to come up, please. Just summarize this, the Welsh family is requesting exemption for the child to remain at Riverdale instead of being zoned to Rockville. Typically, if they don't come to their board appeal, the board will make a motion to uphold the denial, so that we can just close that one out. We had one similar last week.
Move to a poll.
Thank you. Second?
Just a quick question, Mr. Evans, so the family is not here, the parents are not here?
I believe so.
Okay.
Welsh family here?
Have a second call? Okay, I would second the motion, then.
Thank you.
Just so the board's aware, we send those notices certified and regular, so we can ensure they get them.
Okay, call Row, Ms. Michael's?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, the Gentry family, are they here tonight? The parent, this is for a sophomore, they're requesting for the child to remain at Stewart's Creek High School instead of Blackman High School. The parent says the student wants to pursue the veterinary and science program at Stewart's Creek High School and take dual enrollment classes through the school, which it's offered through the UT Martin Dual Enrollment Program. Her Tyra Pilgrim and Dr. Justice, Blackman High School also offers an agriculture pathway which includes a veterinary and science program. They do not currently have a dual enrollment opportunity, but it's something they may pursue in the future. The parent says the student also wants to take Tennessee history at Stewart's Creek.
Any questions?
Mr. Gentry, is there anything that you need to add?
Basically, what it comes down to is she's been wanting to be a vet since she was eight years old, and being the fact that Stewart's Creek has this dual enrollment program, and it just happens to be at UT Martin, which is the college she wants to attend because of their veterinary program at UT Martin, it's an outstanding program. So if she's forced to go to Blackman where they don't have the dual enrollment program, she will effectively lose 12 hours of college credit at UT Martin, which is the college she's going to anyway. So it sort of puts her behind the eight ball, I guess you would say, because the school she currently goes to is going to offer it, and that's the college that she's wanting to go to to pursue her career path. So if you put her at Blackman, she loses 12 hours of college credit that she can't get it. If she stays at Stewart's Creek, she will be able to get it, so.
Ms. Pilgrim, if, now she's a rising sophomore, she'll be a sophomore next year?
Yes, sir.
All right, so as I'm understanding all this, they could offer dual enrollment at Blackman in veterinary and science, correct?
Yes, and that would be during their junior and senior year.
And because this is, this would be a TBR school, any state school, that would transfer, that dual enrollment credit would transfer over?
Yes, it should.
Making sure I was clear on everybody.
She did take the agritech class this year, too, to start on that same path, because she had all of it laid out with her guidance counselor at Stewart's Creek. She had from here all the way to her senior year already planned, so.
Okay, any questions? We have a motion?
Can I ask a question, just to be clear? So, the dual enrollment class would not be for this year, 'cause she's gonna be a sophomore, so it would be next year, that, and what's the probability of, of her participating in that kind of program? I mean, is Blackman looking to, to provide that? If she doesn't go to Blackman, could she participate in that program?
We are looking at the dual enrollment opportunities for Blackman in the agriculture program. And so, I don't, I know that the one at Stewart's Creek is already established, and it is with UT Martin, and it is a great program. But she would not be able to attend those until her junior and senior year. And so, then, by then, maybe we could have that at Blackman for that, but I don't know if it would be UT Martin or not. It would, could possibly be another school, like you said.
Who, who teaches the, who teaches the, uh, who teaches at Stewart's Creek?
Amy Olt.
But she's not a, uh, a professor at UT Martin?
She could be. She, she's not, she's doing it, she is actually doing the dual...
I think we need to be cautious when we're comparing employees.
No, she's, she is, um, teaching that class as a dual enrollment class.
Yeah, I understand that, but we also have one that's teaching it at Blackman, too, right?
No, sir, no, she's not teaching.
I thought we were offering veterinary science at Blackman.
We do have veterinary science, but not dual enrollment.
I, I know that, but we have someone that, that's teaching veterinary science at, at Blackman. My question is, could the person at Blackman, if that's one of our courses of study, and we've all know that we want to provide EPOs and, and, uh, or some type of thing in those programs, would it be possible to, to add a dual enrollment to that agriculture, uh, to that veterinary science?
Yes, I just don't know if it would be with UT Martin or not.
I, I'm gonna go back and ask again, does it matter that it's UT Martin?
No, sir.
I mean, it's a TBR school, right, a state school?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yes. Sorry, I misunderstood.
But if she starts later, how many credits, if she doesn't do the dual enrollment now, how many credits would that knock her out of, possibly?
She can't do the dual enrollment until she's a junior, anyway, so, yeah.
For some reason, they don't do dual enrollment, then where does that leave her?
I would say we need to, I mean, not just for your daughter, but we need to be looking at dual enrollment opportunities in veterinary science.
Yes, we, we do.
Other questions?
I don't want to take that chance, to be honest with you.
Have a motion?
I understand y'all's situation, but I don't want to take that risk with my daughter flipping a coin if y'all are gonna have it or not. You know, I, I don't mean that to sound mean or nothing, I just, you're talking about my daughter.
What is the probability of that happening?
I mean, it is something that we, I feel like this microphone's not working. Um, it is something that we will look at, and it could be that we have that by then. Um, I know that the teacher at Blackman, um, is doing dual credit right now with MTSU. And so, it could just be for that veterinary class, by the time they get to that senior year for that, that, that is available. But I know that we're doing dual credit right now.
Who would we, who would we do an MOU with? What, what, uh, post-secondary institution would you pursue?
Probably MTSU, because they already work with them so much, so, and they've already got that dual credit established, so.
Those, those hours acquired at MTSU are transferable to any state school?
Yes, sir.
She'd still be eligible for UT Martin, basically what we're saying, huh?
Yes.
So, just, again, but for my clarification, too, just in understanding the whole dual enrollment process, I'm sure there's a process involved in getting the university to agree...
Yes, ma'am.
To grant college credits for the courses they're taking at school, whether it's veterinary science, or culinary arts, or robotics, or what have you. Um, is it a complicated process, and are there, I guess I'm just curious, like, do they have different criteria, they demand different things of us? With MTSU versus UT Martin, is one more difficult to accomplish than the other, or?
It's just each, they each have their own requirements, so it's not that any one is more difficult than the other. It's just, um, we have to sign, Mr. Spurlock has to sign the MOU with them, and then we just have to make sure that, for a dual enrollment, that we figure out the teacher piece of that, and so, the different requirements for that, so.
Based on the current climate with this program, do you anticipate any roadblocks in being able to make that happen with Blackman?
I don't, but I can't, like, I can't, yeah.
No, I understand you can't say certainty, I, I understand that, but...
MTSU and UT Martin are very, work with us all the time, and so, you know, they are both very good, good schools as far as working with us for the different dual enrollments.
Is this the first time we've had it come up, where there's been a concern expressed that the dual enrollment is there for that program? I'm sorry, at, I lost, trying to think of here, at the school that she's at, versus Blackman, Stewart's Creek, thank you.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Um, is this the first time that we've had a concern expressed from a, from a student or a parent that, hey, they can get the dual enrollment credits here at Stewart's Creek, but they can't if they do the program at Blackman?
We just started the dual enrollment with Ag last year.
Okay.
So, it is relatively new, because it is...
It's brand new, anyway.
Mm, it is a, um, it's just, we have to, you know, have all the factors in place, and so, last year was the first full year that we did, and it was very successful at Stewart's Creek, so I foresee us doing more of it.
Okay.
Well, the difference between dual enrollment and dual credit is, if dual credit, they only get the, for that school that we have an MOU at.
Yes, sir.
That's the difference now, and, and the only thing that I would think that would preclude that from being all made dual enrollment is that they're offering some other things within that course of study, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Or if that's the case, then we perhaps would have an issue, we could have potential issue there.
There could be.
What area are we looking at dual enrollment in that path, in that cour, in that pathway?
They also have horticulture at Blackman, and so, I know that that's...
And that's with MTSU?
Yes. And it is dual credit right now, as well.
It's dual credit?
Yes, sir.
Have we thought about moving those to dual enrollment?
We are working with MTSU, actually, to move forward on that, for especially the horticulture, so, yes, the talks are in progress.
And, and might want for the new, um, board members explain that how dual credit and dual enrollment is different?
Okay, so, for dual credit, what that means is that the students can, it is our teacher teaching it, for sure. And they, um, have to pass a test at the end of the semester for, to get the dual credit. And so, what that means is, if they, um, when they go to, you know, it's different with each one, but MTSU, whenever they, um, go, if they take dual credit with MTSU, when they get to MTSU, they will have their high school transcript, and it'll say dual credit on there. And so, then, MTSU will then award them the hours, the three or however many hours that it's in the MOU for. For dual enrollment, it means that they are actually enrolled in a Rutherford County school, and then, whatever post-secondary institution, whether it be UT Martin, Motlo, MTSU, wherever we have the MOUs, TCAT, whatever. And so, what that means is, is that it is an actually transcribeded MTSU transcript, and it also is the same on the high school. So, it's, it's, there's, there's dual enrollment, they're in both places.
So, if I graduated from Stewart's Creek with that, or no, excuse me, Blackman, with that dual enrollment specifically for MTSU, or wherever the school was, that's the only school I can use it for?
No, ma'am, dual enrollment means it could be...
Dual credit, I'm sorry, I got my phrases mixed up.
Yes, dual credit. Dual credit, yes. The, the only guarantee is that they would be at MTSU. Now, there are schools that will take it, but it's up to the individual school, so they don't have to take it. But if it's a dual credit with MTSU, then they have to take it whenever they go to MTSU.
All right, my question, my last question for your promise, okay? The instructor at Blackman High School, do they qualify to teach dual enrollment?
That's what I have to check on.
That's, that's, that would be the issue.
Yep, so that is the issue.
Have a master's degree in their content area, or X amount of hours within that content area?
Right, that, that is the question that we have for all of, that, that's the burning question for all of them. Um, but there are ways around it, not around it, but there are ways that we can make it work, um, you know, as long as the school will work with us.
Is Stewart's Creek Veterinary Program full now?
I have not looked at their numbers, I know that they have, their classes are pretty full, I mean, they keep a very full, um, program. I don't know the numbers yet for the next year.
Well, we know they're, student-wise, they're full, right?
Yes, and they, and there's just the 25 cap for CTE, so we cannot go more than 25 in each of the courses, that's just a CTE requirement.
So, Stewart's Creek is on the not permitted to accept zone exemptions list because of their capacity, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to, um, uphold the, uh, appeal, or the zoning exemption denial.
Okay, second?
Second.
Ms. Johnson? Okay, motion to uphold, Ms. Michael, call Row.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Shaw? Yes. Ms. Estes?
Yes.
Okay, our final appeal tonight, um, the Estes family is requesting a zone exemption for their child to attend Oakland Middle School instead of Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. Ms. Estes, if you'd like to come up. Um, the student is a seventh grader, the student last attended Black Fox Elementary. The parent state, the parent states she does not want her student to attend Whitworth Buchanan Middle School because of the school's academic record. Both principals have recommended against the exemption.
Because I am my child's advocate, I... Thank you, um, child's... Well, when I completed that zoning waiver, and I took that waiver to Ms. Seymour, along with everything that you see in front of you, she had that packet all of two seconds before it was brought back to me. And then, once I realized that Ms. Seymour had signed it, when I completed a zoning waiver for the city school systems, they asked that you list more than one school of your choice. And I did that, based upon what the Tennessee State Record showed for your district report cards and your state report card, just where I obtained my information from, when I started searching for a school that had a better academic record for my child. So, with, with that said, that's why I listed two schools. I listed Oakland Middle, because I was aware that they were in the process of adopting the IB program, but also, Rockville Elementary, knowing that it was on your exemption list, was just hopeful on my end, because they had such an excellent academic record there at that facility. So, when Ms. Seymour signed my form, and when I called and asked her why she chose to sign it in that way, and by writing on the bottom of my form, both schools were on the exemption list, that is not so. Oakland Middle School was not listed on the form. When I completed it, and when I had it signed, she said, "Well, I don't remember signing it for your child, I don't remember the paperwork, I signed so many." Which also leads me to believe that she never looked at any of the academic records, or any of the accomplishments, accomplishments that I presented on my child's behalf. She said, "But obviously, I did, because you have my signature, and I know that Oakland was on there in the past." And with that said, when Dr. Ruiz signed, she signed, and she said, "See below," and followed suit from what Ms. Seymour had done. I've had the opportunity of speaking with the new incoming principal at Whitworth Buchanan. I know that she was the vice principal at Rockville, and I know that she is, as Mr. Evans put it, is hitting the ground running. But as a realist, I, I know that that opportunity is not gonna be available for my child come August, and I, I mean, that, that's just, but, once, we tested at Central Middle, she's on the waiting list there, my oldest son is at Central Middle. And I think academically, she, she can do the work that is offered at the IB program. I, I'm, I'm not sure how else to...
Do you have a question?
I'm sorry, he, he was talking to me.
Oh, okay, I, I thought you guys were about to ask me something. But, but I'm not sure how else to, to go about getting her involved in a pro, there, there, you know, one, one school for a middle school age child in, in this county, in this district, that offers this type of program, and that's Central. And then, we've got Oakland that offers it for high school age children, and you've got Blackman that offers it, a, a more appropriate academic program for the high school age children. I would just like a jumpstart on this. My child is great in band, she wants to do marching band. If she's allowed to attend Oakland Middle, then we have that opportunity for advancement to continue the IB program from middle school to high school, and participate in a marching band, and we don't have that opportunity at Central. Her, her goal is to attend University of Tennessee and participate in the marching band. And from her band director at Blackman Middle, you know, there, there are lots of opportunities afforded to us if we continue on that path. So, the academics are my biggest standpoint here, and other than the fact that we were sort of at a deficit when we started.
Ms. Estes, um, she's got a great, there's a good, good report cards here, but on our, um, on our IB program, which we include the middle years program, there's a requirement, um, in, of a, uh, scoring in the 80th percentile in two of the tested areas on 10 Ready. Now, we've got to go back and amend some language, we call it TCAT, but it's 10 Ready.
Right.
Do you have, uh, any kind of...
I contacted Ms. Johnson, there were some old 10 Ready test scores in there, I've got the third...
They're in here?
I, I think that's what that is, that I got from them, I tried to get a copy of those.
Let me see, I didn't see that, but I'll look...
Uh, it should be after the last report card.
Okay.
It shows some, the problem with that, it's, it's sort of a raw test, a generic test score that doesn't show what the comparisons are.
Right, that, what it does, it does give out raw scores, I, we don't need it this year, because we know it's raw scores, but we can go back, uh, you know, to her, to her sixth grade year.
Correct.
Or fifth grade, actually, it'd be her, we can do that, but we, we, but on our, um, on, on, it's in policy, is it not in policy, or is it just in...
The board action that was taken, which is why the language is a little bit out of date, because at the time, the exam tests were in effect, but of course, that's no longer...
Right. If, but what we've, what we've done, even with the IB program in the high school, is they, we look at the report card, and the report card looks good.
Right.
Uh, but we also look at, uh, the, the, their, their scores on that, on that 10 Ready test, and if they score two out of, it used to be four, but now it's three, it will soon go back to four when science goes back to being tested. But, uh, if they're scoring the 80th percentile on two of those areas, then that qualifies, and I can't...
I, I think it's right past, and I did try to get a copy of those from Ms. Johnson, she's the assistant principal at Black Fox Elementary. She said something about with the 10 Ready score, something occurred, and they're requesting some additional information from the Murfreesboro City Schools.
Okay, I, I see some of this right now.
Yes, sir.
In, in, um, and, and, and let me care, tell you how it, it works, okay? On the, on that 10 Ready test, it's got, it's got below basic.
Right.
Okay, it's got basic, on track, and it's, and then it's got mastery. Okay, now, mastery would be your 80th percentile and above.
Okay.
And, 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 and she's doing wonderful here, but I don't see, and, and on this one here, I don't see any mastery on it.
And that's the last one I have, I mean, I don't have...
Right.
And then, I'll also...
And I think this was 2017.
Yeah, Dr. Ash, forward her standardized test...
Yeah, I saw the SAT test that she, she took over there, right?
Yes, yes, there's AP testing, and this is IB, and it's a little bit different as far as the way it transfers, but, yes.
She should have, uh, another one from, um, 2018, this is not, well, hold, hold on, there is one in 2018. There, there is one from 2018 on here also.
So, Director, have we already established written criteria for the qualifications for Oakland Middle's IB program?
It was the same as Oakland High School, it's the same as the BCS, it's, it's been consistent.
Okay.
I mean, we probably need to put it in, clean up the language. And there's a, there's a possibility, you're right, all we got now is raw scores, and there's a possibility that, that she could hit those. We don't know.
So what's the application? That's what I was trying to, because I know from being at Central, we also applied for the program at Oakland High School, and my son got into it, so I know how the application process is.
Right, but they have to meet those, those tests.
Right, and I understand. But how do you get an application, once you have this other standardized testing in return, to see if you qualify for that, because there's nothing out there for...
Yeah, that's, you're right about this. What we do, need to do, Mr. Evans, is create a, if the board is going to accept outside zone, outside the Oakland Middle Zone, which I would, I mean, and then as to the board's decision, I would caution you however, on the enrollment at Oakland Middle, I mean, so you might want to do it judiciously or something like that, we would need to create a zoning, if the board chooses to do so, we need to create, like we do with the IB program at Oakland High School, we need to do one for the middle years program at Oakland Middle. So you're right about that. It should be a different form altogether.
Right, and I'm not able to locate.
That's right, because we haven't created it. That's correct.
And, you know, we started taking exemptions in February, and I believe the board heard about this program in March of this year. That's when it was...
Right.
We were already in the process for this year.
One, I'm sorry, but to be honest, initially, when I started this process, I chose Oakland Middle School based upon their track record on the Tennessee State website. And then I learned, as I became further in this process, that they had actually adopted this program, because I don't know that it's public knowledge yet. It's kind of, it's hearsay, and then I confirmed it with Dr. Ruiz.
Possibly could do that, right?
I've got a few comments here, because I went through this whole thing. I noticed on her denial deal, that, from Mr. Evans, I guess, denied it because she didn't have her application in on time. But I'm sitting here, looking at this information where it was faxed and everything. We've had people vouches been faxed, and I don't know when she actually received a call, but what bothers me to a degree is looking at her application, as she mentioned where Ms. Seymour basically denied it because she thought, it wasn't, the school was on the list, which it wasn't.
Right, I agree with that.
I'll go back to, and I know, I guess, you intend for your daughter to go to the IB program for what you're in high school.
I would like the possibility of that intent based upon her work ethic, but like I said, initially, when I started this, I chose Oakland Middle School based upon their academic records, and then found out about the IB program, which made me want to pursue it further, once I found out that was a possibility, because of the state website, Oakland's grades as far as middle school were much better than some of the other areas. And where we're zoned for, I mean, Whitworth Buchanan offered as an academic program.
But you're...
But I want my child to participate in the IB program at Oakland Middle.
But your son applied for the IB program also, and we went to the...
For high school, we were in the middle school program already at Central, and when we had to apply for the high school, we applied at both places, and we were accepted into the IB program at Oakland as well, but he chose to stay at the high school where he already attended and had a peer relationship.
I guess the last comment I'll make, that, just to be honest, we're reading this information, I guess you say, I'm, I think I'm in favor of allowing you to do it, because knowing when you get to high school, you're going to have to apply again, but I know last week when we had these hearings, the last couple we had, they didn't have the form filled out right. My understanding is they got to fill the form out, and if both principals agree to it, they can, they can go, correct?
Typically, if the both principals agree to it, and there's a valid reason there, we will typically approve it, yes. Last one that we had last week that you're referring to, the family had filled out the form wrong, and they're, they're starting that whole process over now, and we're going from there.
I guess, I guess going back to that, they didn't have the form in on time.
I don't know if I understand your question. Their original application was in on time, but just to be, just to be clear, this was not denied because it was late.
Well, I mean, that's what your letter says somewhere.
It says in addition to. And each time we deny one that comes in after the date, I put that in the letter, but I had talked to Ms. Estes before that and said that we would still accept it, because she says she turned it into the principals', and it is signed before the 15th by the principals', but it never got to us. So I'm not sure who didn't send it to us, but we had a few of those, and we still accepted them, if we could see that the principals signed them before the date.
I did receive documentation from Rebecca, who works in the front office, and she said that they had been faxing this information to, for parents as a courtesy. And when I spoke with Mr. Evans, he said, "It was my responsibility. I should have brought it." And I did share that information with Rebecca, and she again stated to me that they did it as a courtesy to the parents who were doing that, and I verified that with Dr. Ruiz. But I was surprised to see in the letter that it said, secondly, that you did not return your documentation in on time, when at the top of my form, it clearly says, where it was documented by Rebecca, it says CO, which I'm assuming is Central Office on 412. And then when I realized my form had not gotten here, I called to see what the process was, what the turnaround time was for determining the denial, to know whether or not it was yea or nay, and no one here had received it. So somewhere in fax space, it had been lost, even though it had been attempted. So she emailed me a copy of it, and on the top of her email, and you have a copy of that as well, it has the receive date and the fax date, and I got a copy, and that's when they called me the day after. But then again, it still said that, that, so, but that's just my opinion.
It's not the primary reason, though, just to be clear. Like I said, we did accept it, even though it did not get to us on time, for whatever reason. The primary reason was that the principals recommended against it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
May I? I've got a couple of questions, and I'm not really sure for who at this point, but a couple of observations to make as well. Mr. Ms. Estes live in my zone, I believe, so she had reached out to me previously, so I had some conversation about this, and I guess, frankly, I'm, I'm running a very close parallel to my personal experience, which I don't have a problem sharing here, and of course, Mr. Spurlock and all my fellow board members, as well as Mr. Estes, are aware that when my youngest son started into high school, we were zoned for another school, and if, I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, you all were not caught up in the rezoning of the high schools.
No, you're not.
Okay, this was simply a rezoning request saying, "I'd like for my child to attend this middle school, because I think the academic rigor, whether it's IB or what have you, would be better." And of course, we base a lot of our decisions or our confidence on the principals agreeing or not agreeing, and as we've already heard, and Ms. Seymour herself, I guess, admitted that it wasn't really looked at, and the basis for her circling that no was the fact that she was going on the assumption that she thought Oakland Middle was overcrowded, and on that no exemption list, which my understanding, Mr. Evans, that it is not. Is that correct?
Oakland Middle is not on the list, no.
Okay. So in theory, because I, you know, I look at the situation where my son also had applied for Central Magnet, and unfortunately, didn't quite make the cut, his freshman year, I think he was eighty-something on the waiting list. And we too were seeking more academic rigor for him. And I think one of the reasons he didn't make the cut at Central originally, although I've never seen these exact profiles and standards for how we determine whether or not the child gets into IB or Central, I'm sure they're there, I'm just not familiar with them. But my understanding was that one of the reasons was a kind of a lower threshold score that he had originally made on what was back then known as the Explorer Test and the math scores, which from my understanding, we put about as much faith in the validity of those scores as we have our TCAP 10 ready test the past couple of years too. But neither here nor there at this point, if, if Ms. Estes, do you, I mean, if you had had the opportunity to sit down with Ms. Seymour and say to her, and with her understanding that Oakland Middle was not overcrowded, do we know that she would not have approved this? I mean, because, and it's apparent too from Ms. Ruiz's comment, that she was just following suit, and I'm not faulting either one of them, and I understand our principals have been bombarded, and I feel for them. I feel their pain. But this is not, I want my child to stay at this school because this is where they were zoning request. This is a request for a child to move into a more academically rigored situation, which is what we did with Jacob. When he wasn't accepted at Central, we applied for the IB program, and fortunately, he was accepted there. So I really, I know it's middle school, but, you know, we agreed as a board to pay the money to have this program put in at Oakland, and even though this was discussed at that last board meeting, I don't agree with a decision that had apparently been made, and it wasn't a board decision, that we weren't going to allow zoning exemptions for this program. I think it needs to be looked at, and if Oakland Middle is not overcrowded, I think that's even more reasoning to me that we should.
I'm not sure what Ms. Seymour had said. I can't predict that, but I do know that Ms. Ruiz or Dr. Ruiz has been trying to hold the lines, even though she does have a new annex at the school this year, because there's, you know, that area is growing rapidly, and there's a lot of new homes being built and like that. I don't, I can't say what they would have done. All I can say is what they've written on there, which is not recommended. And as far as the IB program for Oakland Middle School, I mean, that's, that's not my area.
I think we discussed that same thing about, I mean, this is no secret. We've discussed this, whether we think there's validity in the instrument or not, we've always said eighty percentile or above, in each one of the, or two out of the four areas.
That's what it is, that's what it is.
It's been that way back in 2006, when we, the inception of the IB program at Oakland High School. When, when that program started in 2006, we didn't accept zone exemptions to it. And then in, I think, 2009, I spoke to Director Gill about offering it throughout the county, and he gave permission, and that's where we came in. And I think the next year, Blackman, Ms. Vic wanted to set up some requirements for some things that she was doing. And we all tried to stay similar. Now, as I understand it, in Central Magnet, it's, it's a point system. They look at your last grading period on your report card. They do the SAT test. They give you so many points, and then whatever that cumulative points come up to, that puts you in line where you are, where you are in terms of...
It's a spreadsheet that Dr. Ash reviewed. Yes, I'm seeing that, yes.
Right.
So are we saying that that would be the basis for why we would be denying the zoning request, or are we saying it based on what the principals say? I guess I'm a little confused. Do we know for sure that the Estes's daughter did not have those scores, or confused about?
Currently, on your 2017 and your 2018, you don't. She doesn't meet it. Now, on the 2019, we don't have, we won't have those until July, late July.
Right, and I could not access to those either for...
Right, you can't.
Right, I try, yeah, right.
You know, it's just raw scores is all it is.
Right.
Now, we could, we could try to make a determination, looking at the quick score in comparison to the top. That's the only, I mean, and that's not an exact science, but we could do something like that.
Well, I guess the only...
Because we do have acc- we don't have access, because she's actually in Murfreesboro City.
Correct. And like I said, I don't know what the issue was, but Ms. Johnson made reference that they had requested some additional information
Right.
from the city schools.
And you can't, they can't give you anything but raw scores. That's all they could give you.
Right.
I do know in the letter, and I don't want to read these out loud, because we're talking about a student, but there's, you've mentioned some percentile information here, and one of those, yes ma'am, one of those is above eightieth, but the others, according to this letter.
And that's a little different, though. The SAT 10 is a little, little different from...
The 10 ready.
Right.
I'll go back to, in reference to, we can refer back to the high school. First, I'll refer to the middle school, that we got capacity. I'll go back to the high school, when we had the IB program, in the way it is right now, if we're at capacity, we're going to look at the IB program. But back at that time, the, the high school had plenty of capacity, so whoever wanted to come, pretty well came.
That's right. That's correct. We had, in fact, we, our enrollment was probably smaller than any high school at that time.
That's correct. Under all the circumstances, which I was back, I was around back then, you know, with the new schools and the whole nine yards, so we were glad for people to want to...
Absolutely.
But I'll go back to on this one right here, if we got capacity, whether we're dealing with the IB program or whatever the case is, that's where I'm in favor of. As much as I want to see them try to get in the middle school program and then work their way into the high school IB.
Looking at, just looking at some of the grades, you know, and it's not an exact science, but looking at some of the grades, I could see where your daughter would fit the profile, you know. I mean, of course...
And the last thing I'll say in, in her defense, is that, you know, like I said, I learned this information as I was pursuing Oakland because of its academic record on the state website. Yes, I would like her to be able to participate in the IB program, but I think her chances academically at this point, with what Ms. Ruiz has accomplished in her few years at, and my cousin's children attended school, and she's a social worker in the state of Tennessee, and she attested to how much that facility has changed and how much the academics have changed with her children while they were there before they went to high school. I'm just looking for that same opportunity, and it's not that I don't have the faith and misneed.
Sure.
But again, I don't feel like that footing's going to be obtained August 7th, 8th, 9th, whatever the first day of school is.
Right.
And it's, it's going to take a little time to accomplish a goal so large.
So again, putting aside the IB program for a moment, and to Mr. Hodges' point, that Oakland is not overcrowded, and this is not a zoning exemption request because of the rezoning of all the high schools and what middle schools got involved, if the principals had heard Ms. Estes and had approved this, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. Am I correct?
Probably.
It would have been granted.
See, I was never heard. I was at a deficit based on how she signed, and you can see that.
Ms. Estes, I know you mentioned, and I'm sorry, I don't want to try to find it right now. I know your, your child had applied for Central Magnet, was put on the waiting list. Where on the waiting list is your child? Do you know what the number is?
Seventy-fifth. And again, in middle school, in sixth grade, they accept, my understanding is somewhere between 125 and 130. Those chances decrease from seventh grade to eighth grade to 25 to 30, depending upon who stays, and then your chances will increase again your freshman year. But those numbers don't really change. Number one, as Dr. Ash says, lots of parents don't RSVP to say, "Hey, we're not coming." They just choose to go elsewhere, or they wait till the very last minute to share that information with you, and at that point, you may have chosen to go on to a different school, because I have to put my efforts someplace else in order to take care of my child.
Right. If she's, if she's that far, because I know my son was even farther down on the waiting list than that, when he applied for Central, not much, but I think he was like 85th or something like that. But that still is a pretty good indicator, if they're even within the top hundred on the waiting list, that they have been very academically successful. And again, I have absolutely no faith or confidence in our TCAP scores these last few years anyway, but I think I've got my questions answered. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I would move that we, the board proceed to overturn the denial on this zoning exemption and grant it.
A second?
Okay.
Mr. Hodges, motion been made to overturn the appeal. Before we vote, I'd like to say that I'm not a relative of Mr. Ms. Estes.
No, you are not.
And to my knowledge, we've never met. For all you people out there on TV, we don't want to start any rumors.
We sure would like to have had a yard, son, while you were running, because we had a lot of phone calls on your behalf at our home.
Well, be nice to them.
We were very nice, yes, sir.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Ms. Michaels?
Yes.
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 Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll receive a letter from it'll come next week, and that is what's due for registration at the school.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Evans, I want to thank you for another good job.
Absolutely.
That concludes our zoning exemptions this year, so hopefully...
I will say this, we're looking at... I've talked to Mr. Evans, and we're looking at a more efficient and less tedious way of doing these zone exemptions.
It's much welcomed.
Yeah. Not the appeals. We're talking about the zone exemption.
My... Mr. Spurlock's portion will get easier. Yours will stay the same. But I do expect... This is an unusual year. We don't typically have this many appeals for those who have done this before. We typically run between three and five total. I think the rezoning fueled... I know the rezoning fueled a lot of that this year. Most of these were because of the high school rezoning. So next year, hopefully, the number of appeals will go down.
So what you're telling us, don't rezone again, right?
I would never say that.
All right. No insurance, right? Directors update.
Yeah, I'd just like to shout out one of our own here. Developed... She and I met when we were looking at developing something different in terms of our principal pipeline, and she is part of this national organization, AASPA. And she submitted our Aspiring Administrators Academy, which is... Which we all did a book study on, on this book. I would strongly encourage all of you, if you haven't done this, you take the little test. It's kind of enlightening to see where you fall as far as those major themes are concerned. But to make a long story short, she submitted it. I think you had a battery of questions.
Yes, they had a drill, drilling time of seven essays that we could review and explain how we changed our program, what we're getting out of it, and what we're going to see in the future to help retain and train our teachers for future positions.
So in October, am I correct on this?
October, during fall break, yes.
She will be accepting for the Rutherford County School System, the CS Robinson Award, which is annually given to one district based upon innovation in leadership. So that's great.
Kudos, Dr. Anthony.
Thank you.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
Can I say, led you, lady?
Well, we got this little... I got this mailer from TSBA, which I found was really helpful, kind of highlighted a few things, but to the dual enrollment, there was an issue. There was some legislation that was passed that increased the dual enrollment courses from two to four for our students, which is kind of exciting news, very exciting news. Also, the military exemption from the age requirement to drive school buses was something that kind of slipped by me. They... I guess they've made adjustments to it. They still have to qualify for the driver's license, but from 25 to 23 for military. So exciting stuff.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Ms. Hodges?
Thanks for the quiet.
Thank you, sir. General discussion?
I would like to say, on the zoning exceptions, I know it's difficult when we're at capacity, but when we have parents who are very active in their students' careers and everything, I feel like we need to be more lenient on those exceptions. And then those that talk about our schools and say that we're not giving a choice to those parents don't really have a leg to stand on.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, nothing else. We're adjourned.